Welcome to the public hearing that is being held by the Committee on Higher Education, Culture, Public Library, and Women Affairs on Tuesday, February 2, 2016. And the time now is 10:05. I'd like to, of course, thank members of the committee who joined me this morning, the vice chair, Senator Underwood, and then to my left, Senator McCready and Senator Torres. Thank you so much for joining me this morning. We're here this morning for several appointments and also to hear some bills. The appointments are for Frank P. Ariola to serve as a member of Guam Community College Board of Trustees, the appointment of Gina Y. Ramos, also a member for the Guam Community College Board of Trustees, Bill Number 235-33LS, and that is relative to the operational startup costs of the Guam Museum, Bill Number 242-33, and it's also relative to interim admission, event, and membership fees for the Guam Museum, Bill Number 245, relative to authorizing the Guam Public Library System to lease the portion of the building referred to as the Internet Cafe for the purpose of operating and maintaining a high-quality and reasonably priced cafe. All legal requirements for public notices were met, notices were sent to all media and all senators, five-day notice was sent out on January 26, and a 48-hour notice was also sent out on January 29. Testimonies for the appointees or for any one of the bills should be addressed to my office, and/or you can hand-deliver them to my office or to the mailbox in the reproduction room here at the main legislature building at 155 Hessler Place, I got near Guam, or you can email it to fbtorres@hafed1pat.com, or you can fax it to 472-3589. So with that, we have -- we'll start with the first nominee or appointee for Mr. Frank P. Ariola, and I'd like to call up Mr. Eloy Hera, Gina Ramos, and Dr. Okada. To testify, I'd like to also welcome Senator Morrison for joining us this morning. Thank you, Senator. So, in the order, of course, in which they've signed up is Mr. Hera, start with you, and then Ms. Ramos, and then Dr. Okada, and then, of course, lastly, Mr. Frank Ariola. So, you're right, I have one more thing about the mics, that's true, these are very highly sensitive mics, you don't need to have them too close to you, it picks up your voice, if it gets too close, then it becomes muffled, and we want to make sure that we're able to hear you, because we would have then to transcribe, of course, the testimony as part of the committee report, and when you speak, please identify yourself, who you represent, and if you are in favor or not with -- for the nominee. We'll go ahead and start with you, Mr. Hera.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My name is Eloy P. Hera. I am presently a board member of the Guam Community College as a Board of Trustee, and I'm here to -- in support of the appointment of first Ms. -- rather, Mr. Frank Ariola. And we -- the chairperson had -- or rather, had submitted a written, and I would like to read that in behalf of Ms. Deborah Ballinger, our chairperson of the Board of Trustees, and then after that, I'll submit my own oral testimony. So, testimony for Mr. Frank Ariola, Honorable, you know, Judith T. Wampat, E.D., Speaker, Chairperson, Committee on Education, Culture, Public Libraries, and Women Affairs, giving a Trentai Chesna, Lieutenant Lieutenant Guam. Hafeday Speaker Wampat, on behalf of the members of the Guam Community College Board of Trustees, I submit this testimony in support of the reappointment of Mr. Frank Ariola as a member of the board. Mr. Ariola's service as a trustee had been instrumental in the success of the Guam Community College. His institutional knowledge and experience as a businessperson bring value to our role as policymakers. The board really appreciates Mr. Ariola's enthusiasm and unwavering support of the college. As the college strives to fulfill its mission as a leader in career and technical workforce development, providing the highest quality student-centered education and job training for Micronesia, the board truly benefits from Mr. Ariola's continued insight and guidance. As Board Chairwoman, I speak for the other members in saying the board welcomes Mr. Ariola's reappointment to the GCC Board of Trustees, and we look forward to having him work with us as a -- as we fulfill our mission. Sisus Maasi for the opportunity to present this testimony in his favor. And testimony for Ms. Gina Ramos, same thing to the Honorable Speaker, Hafeday Speaker Wampat, on behalf of the members of the Guam Community College Board of Trustees, I submit this testimony in full support of the reappointment of Ms. Gina Ramos to the board. Ms. Ramos was board chair when I joined the board in June 2008. Her leadership and guidance as the longest-serving member of the board enabled me to succeed as a chair in December 2014, and to this day, other board members, and I still rely on her expertise. Ms. Ramos was instrumental in the college reaffirmation of accreditation in 2012, its aggressive capital improvement projects, and its financial stability. Ms. Ramos is familiar with GCC's education and workforce development challenges. Her institutional knowledge and years of experience in the healthcare and hospitality industries add value to the board. Ms. Ramos's professionalism truly benefits the college as a trustee, continuing to address the various issues facing GCC. As a Board Chairwoman, I speak for the other board members in saying that we appreciate Ms. Ramos's reappointment to the GCC Board of Trustees, and we look forward to having her with us to fulfill GCC's mission as a leader in career and technical workforce development, providing the highest quality student-centered education and job training for Micronesia. Sisus Maasi, Deborah C. Ballinger, Chairperson, GCC Board of Trustees. And now, I recently joined the GCC Board of Trustees, and I don't really have, you know, too much knowledge of both reappointment, however, in the short time that I have, you know, kind of attended all the meetings and watched, you know, Mr. Ariola and Ms. Ramos in action, and now reading their, you know, their rich history, I definitely agree with our chairperson that these two individuals are definitely a -- an asset to the community in fulfilling, you know, GCC's mission. And therefore, I strongly support Mr. Ariola's and Ms. Ramos's reappointment, and thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hera. Ms. Ramos.
Hafeday Speaker, Senators, my name is Gina Ramos. I am currently a member of the Guam Community Colleges Board of Trustees, and I do support Mr. Frank Ariola's reappointment to the board. I thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony and support of his reappointment. The GCC Board of Trustees is committed to the college's mission of being a leader in career and technical workforce development by providing the highest quality of education and job training in Micronesia. In order for the board to fulfill its responsibilities, it is imperative that the board is fully paneled with members who are and have been committed to this mission. Mr. Frank Ariola, in my opinion, has demonstrated this commitment by his service this last couple of years as a GCC Board of Trustees member, and his continued willingness to serve on the Board of Trustees. During his tenure as a GCC Board of Trustees member, Frank has always been fully engaged as a board member, from his participation at board meetings, college events and activities, to policy review and accreditation. Frank has always been very deliberate, fair, and analytical in his decision-making as a board member, a quality that is much valued in board members. Frank's experience as a local businessperson, in particular with regard to facilities and construction-related projects, brings to the proverbial table extensive knowledge of Guam's economic environment and economic drivers. This knowledge and experience will be particularly valuable as we guide the college through the process of preparing for and optimizing on any activities that impact our island's economy and therefore, impact education in Guam. Again, I support Mr. Ariola's reappointment to the GCC board, and respectfully ask that the legislature confirm his reappointment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Okada.
Hafeday Speaker Wampat, Senator Underwood, Senator McCready, Senator Camacho Torres, and Senator Morrison, thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony in support of the reappointment of Mr. Frank Ariola to the Guam Community College Board of Trustees. Having served with Mr. Ariola since his original appointment to the board by Governor Felix Camacho in November of 2008, I have witnessed numerous ways in which his business expertise has greatly benefited the college. Mr. Ariola was elected as Board Secretary in 2010, and has since been twice re-elected by fellow board members to continue serving in that capacity. As the board secretary, he was instrumental at GCC, having obtained its reaffirmation of accreditation in 2012. He has supported the college's aggressive capital improvement project schedule, and he continues to provide direction and guidance as a board member. Mr. Ariola's input into GCC's revised institutional strategic master plan for 2014 through 2020 helped to identify key initiatives that will enable GCC to take advantage of the direct and indirect post-secondary educational opportunities Guam's impending military buildup will bring to our community. While we aggressively prepare for the dynamic changes that will occur on Guam in the coming years, Mr. Ariola's continued service on our board will provide the continuity GCC needs to move forward. In addition to Mr. Ariola's wealth of knowledge, he has demonstrated to our faculty, staff, and administrators that he is an effective leader, engaging in productive dialogue and activities at the college. For all of the above-mentioned reasons and more, I fully support Mr. Ariola's reappointment to the Guam Community College Board of Trustees. Sisus Maasi.
Thank you very much, Dr. Okada. So, yes, I don't think we have any questions for any of you who testified, so we're going to move on then to Mr. Ariola for your testimony. He might need to bring a little closer to you now. There's your further way.
Good morning, Madam Speaker and distinguished senators. Thank you for participating today. My name is Frank P. Ariola, and I would like to thank you and the people of Guam for the privilege of serving the Guam Community College over the last two terms. I'm now before you again requesting for your support and approval to continue the good work in my third term as Board of Trustee at the Guam Community College. During my seven years I've served as a trustee, the Guam Community College, or GCC, has been successful in achieving our mission as a leader in career and technical workforce development, providing the highest quality student-centered education and job training in Micronesia. The first two years as trustee, GCC under the leadership of Dr. Okada and the support of the Board of Trustees took advantage of President Obama's American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of 2009. All shovel-ready plans for this goal were submitted, grants executed, and construction project initiated and completed. Today, GCC's faculty and staff and students have a campus that they are proud of. From the get-go, the largest challenge I experienced as a trustee was acclimating to the educational -- or the education acronyms, such as SLOs, or Student Learning Outcomes, CTE, Career Technical Education, and WIA, or Workforce Investment Act. Now, part of the reason that I'm going over these acronyms is I participated in the project review panel that oversees the Career Technical Education, and now Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. This was especially rewarding to me as we reviewed business plans and proposals, and we selected programs that positively impacted Guam's students and the people of Guam. On July 4, 2012, accreditation was reaffirmed to the maximum allowed period of six years, and GCC continues to execute our plan to maintain accreditation, as the college will be visited again in the spring of 2018. Continuity and training of the Board of Trustees is a key component of achieving accreditation. GCC has invested in board training in me, which I will continue to use at the benefit of the college. I'll end this by offering a guarantee that if I'm reappointed, that I'll continue to support the Guam Community College, the president, faculty, and staff. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ariola. I just have very simple questions to ask you. This is going to be your third term.
Yes, ma'am.
Why do you want to serve again?
Well, I'm very passionate about the school. Coming in, I was business -- I was in the business community, and I really didn't know much about education. After working with Dr. Okada in the school, and just seeing, you know, the needs of our students, you know, really wanted me to participate more, to learn more, participate in training, participate, understand what the, you know, the future is of our workforce and its demands. So, that's the primary reason.
And can you share with us, since this is going to be -- you've served two terms, what was your attendance and participation like?
Oh, excellent, excellent. I attended the majority of the board meetings, the only time I did not attend is if I was off-island, and a lot of times I was off-island attending a GCC function, which was for board training, or to train, or to attend a conference for community colleges.
We're happy to hear that, because I know many times individuals like yourself have a regular job and a busy one at that.
Yes.
And then to make the time to attend board meetings.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, thank you very much for, you know, your time and service for GCC.
Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair, do you have any question or comments?
So, given that you've already had experience, I believe that you've also had experience in working with the tri-board, and there are certain issues that I believe had come up, specifically in relation to identifying the common core of data that can be shared between the Department of Education, the University of Guam, and GCC. And the reason for that is, of course, so that we can conduct longitudinal studies that would then help track how successful or the kinds of strengths and weaknesses our respective institutions have, ensuring that our students do succeed in whatever track or whatever their goals are. So, can you explain to me where the board is for GCC regarding that policy or that proposed policy for that? I know that that has been under discussion, or something that has been thought about, Dr. Okada, over the past several years, and I'm just wondering whether there's any movement relative to that policy that would be shared by the three institutions.
I'd like to respond to that. We've had individuals from our institutional research office that has met with representatives from GDOE and from University of Guam to talk about what the common data is that needs to be identified. More recently, they met to participate in a potential grant opportunity, and unfortunately, it was decided that the grant was not going to be submitted by DOE. So, they've had several meetings for discussion to share common data that's needed, and I would just have to follow up after that, but it was just maybe in the last six months that they had a meeting with the institutional researchers from the three different areas.
But my question was to Mr. Ariola, is what his thoughts are regarding that proposal?
Well, we support the proposal. Guam Community College, I mean, we take it a step more further. I mean, we're in the high schools, we have certain programs in the high schools, and, you know, basically, what we want to do is we want to provide a pathway for our students to succeed, whether it's from high school into a community college to get a certificate, to get a job, or, you know, forward to connect with the University of Guam to get a degree. So, yes, our board and our president, we, you know, we're in full support of this program.
So, are there other -- based on your experience again, so there must have been, of course, there have been quite a bit of successes that you had experienced, as we have observed as community members, right? And I congratulate all of you, the board members, for facilitating that, because I know with the kind of support and leadership you had provided to President Okada, then, you know, GCC has actually gone above and beyond what a lot of our island community has expected. And so, what I just want to hear is from your experience, what are the kinds of challenges that you have encountered as a board member?
The program is run extremely well, with leadership, with Dr. Okada. As a board member, our biggest challenge is really is coming together to understand what the -- where the school needs to be in the future. As it is right now, it's run efficiently. Accreditation will be coming up in another two years, and we're actually working with the school to participate in that process. And GCC has been, I believe, accredited since 1979 continually, but there is room for improvement facility-wise. We work together, and as a facility manager and a property manager, that's some of the things that I assist the school with, is, you know, anytime we go over budgets, we look at timelines, we look at what the impact is on our students, if we have to relocate classes and do other things, you know, I try to put my, you know, my experience to help this process. So, that's really us looking forward is really our challenge to GCC.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before I move, I'd like to welcome Senator Tony Adet also to the public hearing. Senator McCready, do you have any questions or comments?
I just want to comment, I can't stay for the whole session, so I wanted to make sure I was here to support you guys. I've known Frank since the '90s, when he would chase me down on the football field. And I think a great compliment to Frank was his passion when you testified earlier, but I think when the question was asked by the chairwoman about why you want to serve again, I think it's passion and commitment, you know, and so I think, in your last statement where you said you have room to improve, you don't hear that much from people, and so I'm glad that you acknowledge the fact that there is room for improvement, because everybody has room for an improvement, and the aggressive capital improvement projects that you guys have, that's been going on for many years, is something that you don't see nowadays. And so, when you see a board that has the institutional knowledge such as yourselves, and you see a leader such as Ms. Okada, who gets along with the board and is together with you guys, that's a successful recipe, and it reflects the entire institution. So, I thank you for wanting to run again, because there's not a lot of people that want to run for boards and reappointments, and so I thank you guys for that, and I hope you continue to work together and have this relationship, because as far as the legislature is concerned, when we see something like this myself, you have to vote in favor of the candidates. And so, Gina and Frank, I support you 100%, and I'm almost certain that you'll get a full support from this legislature as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Senator Torres.
Senator McCready and I had a side conversation about how it's so refreshing to see people come up here who have been tested, and who are part of a formula that's very successful and forward, and, you know, I just want to extend my sisus maasi and gratitude for your willingness to stay on, because it's always good to have a mix that works, is trusted. And I know, too, that you're young professionals as well, and you have families, and a lot of your passion comes from identifying and placing the needs of others similar to the needs of your own, and, you know, that's rare, and it's a good thing, so sisus maasi, I just want to indicate that you have our full support.
Senator Morrison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Ariola, I was looking at your packet, and it says you're a Bronco fan?
Yes, sir.
You know I'm a Patriot fan, so, you know, this is going to be a tough decision.
Sir.
First off, I appreciate your willingness to serve. The GCC has made a great headway for our community, for our students. I thank all the provided testimony in favor of your support. I also, I was looking at your packet, and I've known you, Frank, and as Senator McCready noted, you know, we used to, you know, worry about you on the football field.
Yes, sir.
So, but it was a good thing, you're a great competitor, and I appreciate, you know, as I always noted, that there's a classroom away from the classroom, and you've spent a lot of time out there on the field, helping kids, coaching kids, and I see this on your packet, and I thank you for noting that. You have my full support. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Senator Adet.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Ariola, you know, I don't know you on the field, but I know that you're good in the board, so that's where it counts right now.
Thank you, sir.
You have my support, and thank you again for taking the governor's call to serve on the board, and for wanting to do this for another five years. It shows your commitment and your passion to the higher education of our children, our -- those that strive to look forward and want to educate themselves higher, you know, and what GCC has done today is just truly, truly outstanding. I mean, the work of Madam President with the board, and look what you guys have accomplished. I mean, it's second to none. I mean, you guys have done an outstanding job, and I thank you guys for everything that you have done for GCC. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. I'd like to also say that we did also receive testimony on your behalf from Ms. Lourdes M. Perez, also in support of your nomination, unless she wants to come up to speak, but we do have her written testimony. And I know, Ms. Ballinger, you have just joined us, your colleague, of course, read your testimony, but if there's anything you want to just add on, you're welcome to do that.
I just want to thank all of you for having us here today, and I just want to, you know, express how proud I am of Mr. Ariola serving on the board, and how cohesive our board is, and we continue to do the hard work up at the college, and we will continue to do that, and so I thank you all from the bottom of my heart for your support. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Seeing then that you have the support of all those who are up here, then we don't see really any hurdles to get you on the agenda for next month, but I just want to make sure through the listening audience and anybody else out there who would like to submit any additional testimonies in behalf of Mr. Frank P. Ariola to do so by sending it down to the legislature. So, Mr. Ariola, thank you very much again for accepting to serve in another five years, that's why I ask, because, you know, I've seen some come back only, I mean, they only stay for one term, a couple, two terms, but I've not seen anyone for a third, so thank you very much for your passion to, you know, for the college, and to give of your time. We appreciate that. So, thank you again very much. So, except for only you, Mr. Ariola, and Des, you're going to testify for Ms. Deborah, I mean Deborah, for Ms. Gina Ramos. I have the same individuals, Mr. Hera, yes, Frank, you're going to testify, so you can stay right there. All of you can stay, as a matter of fact, then, I don't have anybody else new, so we're going to go ahead and start off with Mr. Hera, and then in the testimony for Ms. Gina Ramos.
Basically, you know, my testimony is pretty much the same. Like I said, I haven't been on the board long enough, but to, I actually have met Ms. Ramos for the first time when I joined the Board of Trustees at GCC, but, you know, the saying goes, actions speak louder than words, and I watched her in action, and now looking back at some of her, you know, both her resume and her accomplishments, and I have always And I've always guided my judgment on really the end product of anybody's, you know, efforts. And it appears that, and that's why I said I concur with our chairperson, Sumido, who definitely is there all the time to witness Ms. Ramos's performance, you know, while as a board member and I believe as a former chairperson herself. And I mean, it speaks very highly of, you know, of her and most of all, her accomplishment with the Guam Community College. And she will definitely, with this additional desire to continue to serve, I had just asked her whether she's glutton for punishment, but it appears that she actually, it's very easy. She loves what she does and it shows by her performance and performance is what counts. And I fully support her third, you know, appointment and I ask Ms. Chairperson and colleagues to please give her another chance to continue to help the Guam Community College as we move forward.
Thank you very much. So, I'm down to the chairperson.
Thank you again, Speaker Wampad and members of this body. Again, I'm going to keep it short because I prefer it that way. Gina is truly a blessing to our institution and we're very proud to have her. She brings knowledge that I don't have. She's been there longer than I have and, you know, Gina's a doer. Gina's a go-getter and she's, you know, I cannot give enough accolades as to her accomplishments at the board, on the board, and I continue to look forward to working with her. Thank you.
You're welcome. Dr. Okada?
Speaker Wampad and distinguished senators, on behalf of the Guam Community College, I am very pleased to submit testimony in full support of the reappointment of Ms. Gina Ramos to the Guam Community College Board of Trustees. Having served with Ms. Ramos since 2005, first as my role as a Vice President for Business and Finance and since 2007 as the President/CEO, I have seen how her business acumen and expertise in the healthcare industry have greatly benefited the college. Ms. Ramos was Chair of the Board of Trustees during the college's 2012 accreditation process and as such was instrumental in having earned six-year, the highest possible reaffirmation of accreditation from the Accrediting Commission for College and Junior Colleges in March 2012. She has supported the college's numerous capital improvement projects, including the construction of the Anthony A. Leon Guerrero Allied Health Center in 2009. And as the longest-serving member from the community, she continues to provide guidance and support to other board members. In GCC's revised institutional strategic master plan that will take us from 2014 to 2020, Ms. Ramos helped to identify key initiatives that will enable GCC to effectively educate and train our students to take advantage of the direct and indirect opportunities Guam's military buildup will bring to our community. Her connections in Guam's healthcare industry have also led to valuable industry partnerships, grants that have allowed our faculty to earn master's degrees which are an accreditation requirement, scholarship opportunities for our students, and employment opportunities for our graduates. In addition to Ms. Ramos's wealth of knowledge, she has demonstrated, not only to her fellow board members, but also to faculty, staff, and administrators, that she is an effective leader engaging in productive dialogue and activities at the college. Her presence and her leadership have been invaluable to GCC. I fully support Ms. Ramos's reappointment to the Guam Community College Board of Trustees. Sisus Maasi.
Thank you very much, Dr. Okada. Frank, I know you just...
I just have a short comment. I do support Gina's appointment or reappointment to the college. And I do want to just kind of talk about what Mary mentioned. Prior to Gina taking the leadership, the board was not cohesive, and this is in previous terms. Since then, she's been an excellent mentor to all of us, mentoring Debbie, our chair, and the rest of the board members, and it would be a huge loss to the community college if Gina was not reappointed because of the knowledge and leadership that was mentioned earlier. She's really, you know, an asset to our college. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony as well. So, Gina, on your behalf.
Again, Hafaday, Speaker Wampad and senators. Again, I'm Gina Ramos. Thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony in support of my reappointment to the board. It has indeed been a pleasure and a privilege to serve on the Board of Trustees for the last 10 years. In those 10 years, I have seen firsthand how the college has developed in a positive way, not just in terms of infrastructure, but in program offerings and governance. As an individual employed in the private sector, specifically in the healthcare industry, I will continue to use my knowledge and experience to help move the college's initiatives forward in the next few years. As a member of the Board of Trustees who has experienced not one, but two accreditation reviews at GCC, I also hope that I can help the college again lay the groundwork for future reaffirmation of its accreditation status. Considering the economic outlook for Guam and the many changes that are occurring or are planned for GCC, I too, like my colleague, Mr. Ariola, commit to helping transform career and technical education for the betterment of not only our learning community, but also for our industry partners, like the healthcare industry, who rely heavily on GCC to provide a well-trained and educated workforce. I feel that my work experience, my past experience as a member of the GCC Board of Trustees, and my institutional knowledge of the college complements the dynamics that currently exist on the GCC Board of Trustees. I believe that my tenure, a long one, as a member of the Guam Community College Board of Trustees reflects my continued interest in being a positive contributor to the college and to the betterment of our island community. Again, I thank you very much for the opportunity to provide this testimony and for your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Same question.
Why?
I know you've been, you're right. 2005, Frank, was 2008. You're right. Why?
Mr. Harris says I'm a glutton for punishment, but actually, I think I'm a glutton for success and for challenges. And in my very first confirmation hearing, someone asked me, I forget which senator asked me that question, why would you want to serve? And in that, at that time, I said, my parents always told me that education was very important. My dad said the only inheritance he could leave me with was my education. I just feel as a member of this community that everyone in this community should have access to the education that's out there. And I think Guam Community College, through its programs in the high school, post-secondary programs, I think it provides a lot of educational opportunities, trainings for people out there, and I truly support that. And that's why I continue to serve on this board. And it's nice to be on a board that, as Frank mentioned, is very cohesive. We have two great female leaders in the institution. We have President Okada and of course, Chairwoman Ballinger. So, I would like to continue to be able to support them and the community through my membership in the board, so.
I know I didn't ask, oh, I didn't ask this question to Dr. Okada, especially because you're the Secretary of the Board. What is both of them, their attendance and participation like?
So, both trustees have engaged with the campus community in a lot of our efforts, in our activities, in graduation, convocation on occasion. And so, they've been very participatory, not only in the actual board meetings, but we have board training because when accreditation comes up, we're training the board on what accreditation is all about because they need to understand the dynamics of the institution and what their accreditation requirements are. Giving them, even in terms of fundraising, giving them that knowledge helps us garner their support when we go to the board to ask for funding for buildings, for funding for activities, and for additional positions, for example, that, you know, we need their knowledge and we provide an overview of what the budget's going to look like. So, it's very important for them to understand what we're asking for so that when they go out into the community, they're able to respond. We provide them with updates all the time. All the news releases that go out, they get copies of them so that they can understand what we're doing in the community and how we can garner their support. There's a component in our board agenda every month that identifies what are the board's activities that are associated or that are, that have a relationship to what they do as board members. And so, we record that in our minutes every month, board, whether they attended Labor Day picnic, for example, so that they can participate with the employees, or whether they attended our golf tournaments or convocation, graduation. So, we document all of those because we want to show that the board, even in their busy capacity or busy schedules, that they're able, maybe not 100% of the time to attend all activities, but that they do when it's necessary and they do as appropriate, you know, and when they can to help support the college. So, in addition to their attendance, not only on the board meetings, there have been many opportunities where the trustees have participated in extra activities for the college.
Thank you. I didn't, Frank, I'll get back to you, but, you know, Gina, the same question really for both of you. There is, you know, this discussion right now nationally to then have students actually attend community colleges for free. Have you had that conversation and, you know, in terms of what could be done, there are going to be some grants, federal dollars that would be made available? Have you, are any one of you looking into it? I don't know specifically what area, you know, you're assigned to. I know Frank, you're saying with facilities. How about with you, Gina? And is this, of course, something that you've already asked board members even at least have that, you know, brief discussion?
I think we've actually had a brief discussion. I don't think we've fully fleshed it out or put any policy initiatives or anything forward yet, but I know we have discussed it because it was mentioned by, I think, President Okada. We see it in the news. And I think, like I said, I think if a path towards providing funding for community college, whether it be completely 100% free, I think you'd find that this board is very open and probably would support it as long as the funding mechanisms are in place. I think we would support that, so. But we have not yet fully fleshed out that particular policy.
And for you, Frank?
Yeah, it is, the only challenge is the funding. I believe the program, which we've been told was 50% federally supported and then 50% on the local side, so I know that would put an additional, what do you call it, burden on the general fund. So, I think it needs to be well thought of and we're also not a state, so we're looked at as an insular area. So, at times, sometimes they implement some of these programs in the state and see how they work, you know, and then it is pushed out to the exterior infra areas. So, yes, we're in support of it, but we're actually ready to handle it. During President Obama's time, the Pell Grants have gone up substantially and so we've seen that impact on the school and it hasn't deterred us from offering education to our students.
Okay, thank you. Senator Underwood, questions or comments? Okay. Senator McCready, anyone? Senator Adet, you're up.
Yes, Ms. Ramos, also like Mr. Ariola, thank you for your service on the board and for working with Madam President in ensuring that GCC continues on the trend it is and looking forward to more and exciting things happening up there and congratulations on your appointment. And like you, Mr. Ariola, both of you have my support and my vote. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. There's that completes our, any questions for both of the appointees? We want to thank both of you for accepting the nomination again to serve a third term. I think that's excellent. And based, of course, on the testimonies by those present this morning, it's, you know, very positive, so we don't anticipate, actually, we'll let you know in advance so you don't have to worry about this, that we see, you know, at least I don't as the chairperson, to make the recommendation to confirm both of you. So, thank you so much for coming in this morning.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Harvey. I know you don't get to see that too much during the meeting, but... Like I said, I just met you and Frank for the first time.
Yeah.
Just from the testimony, I think it's my nephew.
Oh, probably.
On the very side.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we're going to continue on now with several bills that we have on the agenda and we would like to start with 235. And that is relative to the operational startup cost of the Guam Museum. And we have to testify on that is Mr. Cameron. And just briefly for the listening audiences, that Bill 235 seeks to expand the language of the existing statute beyond personnel to include operational startup costs. And operational startup costs, which may be confirmed or reiterated by DCA, that's why we're here to find out, will be expenses used to develop museum education and marketing programs and to maintain the exhibits and collections or expenses outlined in the RFP scope of work for the Guam Museum. So, I mean, I made those statements, but they really could be questions as well. So, I'm going to go ahead and start off with Mr. Cameron, you know, to then speak on Bill 235, whether you're in favor of it or not. And please also, as you introduce yourself, to let us know whether you are in favor or not, okay, and the position you hold.
Hafaday, Madam Speaker, Senator Underwood, Senator Torres, Senator Morrison, and Senator Adet, thank you so much for being here this morning. I am in support of Bill 23533, an act to amend section in reference to operational startup costs of the Guam Museum. My name is Joseph Arturo Cameron. I'm the President of the Chumor Affairs. As you may be aware, the Department of Chumor Affairs recently procured the services of a local private company to perform management, operations, and maintenance services for the new Guam Museum on behalf of the Department of Chumor Affairs. The contract has been negotiated and is presently being reviewed by the Attorney General prior to final signature of the governor. Our goal is to have the museum fully staffed and operational in time for the upcoming Festival of Pacific Arts in May, of course. This bill seeks to broaden the language of Public Law 3366 to allow other operational startup costs just beyond personnel. These started-up causes are including procurement of long-lead items such as point-of-sale systems, servers, collateral print materials, copy machines, fixtures, display cases, and a whole host of other items required for the startup of the daily operations of the facility. And of course, that includes personnel as well, Madam Speaker. With only three months left before Festback, we do seek to provide our contractor with as much flexibility as possible to ensure that the museum will be fully functional. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you, Madam Speaker, and all the members of your committee for your continued support of the Guam Museum as a proud testament to the history and heritage of our people and a beacon of our unique culture in the Western Pacific. Undangklin Sisus Maasi.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cameron. Now, I know, of course, later after the introduction of the bill, some have asked the question in terms of operational startup costs, whether it's too vague and that, and so the question then I would like to ask you, based on the RFP that was put out, where you've secured then a, you know, a company then to do a public-private partnership, that would then the operational cost that actually would be part of the scope of services that was put on the RFP? And, you know, like, and I'll read just a few of them, there's a long list, but one would be to create professional and efficient operating systems, policies, and procedures in accordance with museum industry best practicing in order to obtain eventual accreditation with the American Alliance of Museums. The other would be to develop an aggressive marketing program to promote the attraction. And then the third would be to develop procurement policies adhering to applicable laws and regulations. And then, of course, there are others, to manage the day-to-day operations of the new facility, manage design, operate, equip, and maintain the retail store... facility, manage design, operate, equip, and maintain the retail store, provide services, you know, to those visiting the facility. I mean, there's a list of it. And I think just for further clarification in terms of, you know, I know that you did list some of them in your testimony, where you've -- I should be looking for now your testimony here. I have so many papers here. Here it is. Where you said includes procurement of long, you know, lead items such as point-of-sale systems, servers, collateral print materials, copy machines. So what you specifically stated here in your testimony, it are more hardware that also will be needed, but then when you look at the scope of services, they're slightly, you know, it doesn't speak to that. And that's why I'm wondering whether is this in addition to the scope of services? And more important is to make sure that we're not, you know, going to leave out anything that's in the scope of services.
Yes, Madam Speaker. As a matter of fact, the IDIQ contract is in the form of indefinite deliverables and indefinite quantities. And we believe that this being driven on a task order-driven on the front of the House, getting the museum open, of course, getting the necessary personnel in place, and then, of course, there's the backside of the House, which is the curatorial, and that can come later. So as we see ourselves moving in to the museum, we want to make sure that we're ready to open and have the lead items there as we open our doors. To answer your question about the American Alliance of Accreditation, one of the things that was really paramount to the applicant who was given a notice of intent to award, that company has in its team a host of professionals that have made every indication that accreditation was paramount. And that leads their mantra on how they would like to operate this museum.
So just to, I just want to make sure it's clear, and just in case, of course, when the question is asked, is that aside from the RFP that lists the scope of services, which like I mentioned, a few of them already, and what your testimony is, is that then the question now is that what you've asked for in your testimony, were any of those costs incorporated in the solicitation at the time?
Yes, Madam Chair, it is. And I'm sorry if I inadvertently didn't give the laundry list of the entire RFP.
So maybe what we could, I could ask of you then is that if you can submit then to the committee that list.
Yes, of course.
Aside, so I can make that a part then of the committee report is not just the scope of services, but in addition, of course, what then the expansion of this legislation is then to include the operational startup costs.
And I will also provide to you the actual RFP.
Okay, I think we have that, ma'am. I don't know. Okay, we'll work with your office on that.
Thank you.
Any questions from the members? Senator?
Hello, Mr. Director. Thank you very much for being here. You know, all of us are just wondering, so at what point, when do you think we will be able to enjoy our museum at this Festback?
Yes, of course, there have been some hiccups on the way with the construction, but we've been assured that in mid-March, the actual construction will be finished interior and exterior. And that's pivotal, actually, because we have Delphi, the fabrication company, that needs to step right in with their fabrication of their hardware, their furniture, the media that needs to catapult for that whole delivery of an opening.
So we are still on target relative to our goal, to have it ready before Festback?
Yes, we're looking at being fast and fierce on that, but it's very important that we get the Attorney General to sign off quickly on the contract so that we can get the governor signed at the same day and get that company on board immediately.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hafaday, Mr. Cameron. In looking at the amount, 529,730, that's a rather odd number.
It is because when we first were given that amount, it was based on a fiscal note that the government of Guam was going to be actually running it, and it reflects only the positions at the time that had a specific listing of positions and also the benefits that would be incurred. So what brings me to the table here is to allow to remove the original language under solely personnel to include other expenses on the startup cost.
And the amount that you saw there is that it's really only half of the year, it's not for the full year.
I just had a question about, in your written testimony, you referenced the procurement of a private company to perform management operations and maintenance. Does that, is the personnel and the staff of the museum a separate body from the management team? Or is the management team also going to be responsible for providing the personnel?
We have a couple of museum assistants who will be assisting on behalf of the Department of Chamois Affairs. Those activities, as we speak, they are in the curator area, and that will save the contractor an additional amount of trying to hire additional people. And so it would be under the direct supervision of the Department of Chamois Affairs in collaboration with what the needs are of the actual facility programs.
Okay. And I ask because there's a sense of ownership and pride that we've been aspiring to, and I hope that that's not deteriorated in any way.
Not at all.
And that it's only enhanced by the management team.
I will give you a sneak preview, that the folks that were brought on board by the management consultant contractor are people that we know who have been in this field for years, and they're qualified with a lot of educational background. And I'm excited about that because it is driven by the people of Guam.
Sitzusmasi.
Thank you.
Senator Morrison?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Cameron, and all involved that are working very hard to get the museum up and running. We're all excited. The understanding based on your testimony is you are in the process of your establishing your base rate fee schedule or interim fee schedule. And it notes here that it will take about 120 days. This is a startup cost, operational purposes. However, is the base, my concern is, does the base rate fees factor in to sustain going forward these personal costs that will be factored in the operational, the startup money? I mean, so that way, there's a transition period here, I know that's going to take place.
That's a very good question, Senator. And I'm here to assure you that any type of admissions fees for programs or admissions to the facility will go directly to the Department of Chamois Affairs, and then it turns right around and revolves back to sustain that contract.
Okay. The Festback is at the end of, around the end of May, correct? And looking at the timeframe here, do you anticipating that, knowing that 120 days kind of takes you up beyond May, that you would look through this body to help in expediting that fee schedule?
Oh, absolutely. Once the contractor's on board, we've been negotiating preliminary numbers, the sustainability plan that I had worked on references a base range compared to the Bishop Museum, but we are a smaller community. We need to balance that.
And I think we could discuss this in Bill 242. That's what that is.
It's coming up now?
We're in 235.
Okay, okay. I'm jumping ahead. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Cameron.
I don't want to confuse the audience that, you know, we're talking about 235, but thank you very much for your questions. Thank you so much, Mr. Cameron. Is there anything else? I think we just covered basically everything. All right, so we're going to just transition into what the senator had started to ask. And basically, 242 then is, let me pull it out just to make sure that the listening audience who will be following us, is that it's relative to interim admission, event, and membership fees for the Guam Museum. And what this would do, Bill 242, then, and it says interim, because you would allow then for the Guam Museum to put admission fees in place without having to go through the administrative adjudication law temporarily. And this is to sunset on August 1st, 2016, allowing the museum to collect then admission, work with the Guam tour agents to negotiate museum tour packages, and to make profits to supplement it and to maintain its stability, sustainability. Also then, of course, now the next question that I know my colleagues have asked, and I'm going to allow you then to provide, you know, additional information and testimony on it, and then we'll be able to continue on with the discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Of course, the Department of Chamois Affairs is in full support of this bill. This bill seeks to provide the Department of Chamois Affairs with the authority to establish interim admission, event, and membership fees for the new Guam Museum. This authority is necessary to allow the department and its contractor to project potential revenue streams with a goal towards making the museum as self-sustaining as possible, yet affordable to our residents and tourists. And I want to capture that word "affordable" because when I look at Bishop Museum's fee structure, it's higher than what I would anticipate, what the contractor and I have been discussing. The Department of Chamois Affairs recently procured the services of a local company to perform the management operation and the maintenance services for the new Guam Museum. This includes providing recommendations for various fees and revenue sources that will be used towards the museum operations. Establishing a base rate for admissions early on will allow our team to begin negotiating with our tour agents, of course. It takes an average of four to six months for tour companies to fold in new attractions or optional tours into their sales programs at our source markets. This includes adding the new Guam Museum into their sales brochures and tour desk print collaterals. It is important for us to quickly negotiate visitor industry rates so that once the museum is fully operational, we can begin welcoming our tourists immediately. From these base rates, we can also determine discounted admission rates for our residents, our manomko's, our veterans, our students, and members of the military. Maximizing revenue streams will require a careful balance. And that careful balance must ensure that the museum can be self-sustaining to the extent possible, but yet affordable for all museum visitors or tourists and our residents alike. Once our interim fees have been deliberated and are established, we will immediately begin processing them through the AAA process. We anticipate that this will take at least 120 days, that's the process, before all fees are properly adjudicated and finalized. We realize that there may be some adjustments to any interim fees we may decide upon. However, we anticipate that they will be minimal in nature, as we are confident that they will be fair and reasonable. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you, Madam Speaker, and the members of your committee for your continued support of the Guam Museum. This facility will stand as a proud testament to the history and heritage of our people and our unique culture in the Western Pacific. Undanklen Sitzusmasi.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cameron. And I'm happy, of course, that you're able to provide in your testimony that, you know, exactly that the, that there will be then, the AAA process will be, will actually then happen. It's unfortunate, I know in our discussion, that we are not able to do that right now because we're fast approaching the opening of the museum. And I surely don't want us to open up and then only have to shut down. You know, we want to maintain it, keep it consistent, and that's the reason for this interim granting, of course, of, you know, you guys setting up the, you know, the fees for events and, you know, and to be able then for admissions and events and membership fees for you to continue to operate. I'm also, of course, happy to see that, I mean, we do expect that there would be, of course, adjustments because as you go through it, then in your dealings with individual visitors and tour agents, that there would be, after a trial, that you may need to either come down or slightly, I say slightly, only go up, not be exorbitant, and that it really be nominal, minimal, and that it be fair and reasonable. So those are all, you know, the things that we want to see happen because we don't want to outprice anything to the point that then you're not going to get, you know, any visitors. And we don't want that to happen. This is definitely a piece of, you know, facility, and of course, the storage of and the display of, you know, not just our culture, but even visiting, you know, displays and exhibits, I think, is going to be truly welcomed by, you know, island community. So I want to thank you for being here. Senator, you have any comments or questions?
I think it's just really good that you would be able to more or less test out the proposed fees. But I'm also assuming, Mr. Cameron, that your, the fees that you will be, the interim fees that you will be proposing is actually standard, right? You've done a review of how much other museums have...
Absolutely. But we're so unique here in Guam because there's always this greater need of balancing the general population of tourism who have pushed for many years for a sense of place where culture is explained to them. And oftentimes, visitors are looking for that place, and it's called a museum. But we are also very cognizant and we're very sensitive to our local. The contractor and I have had several hours' discussion about having grants come in and pay for admissions fees for some of our locals, especially our students. That's very important because the sustainability, the whole concept of nowadays, the living museum, and the living museum concept is such that it also includes a STEM project, it also includes an educational program. I have spoken with the USDA early on several years ago about maybe funding the museum. Of course, that didn't fall through. But they did say, once you open up your museum, we can fund programs. And so once I get this contract signed on, I'm ready to catapult and start looking. The Institute of Library and Museum Sciences has also indicated moving in with programming monies. And these are all educational faceted monies. And we believe that our population, to the largest extent, I do know that the museums nationwide, and especially the rates that are being provided to student rates, we want to lower that rate lower than the national standard for Guam because we do want to include all our students, whether they're in preschool, whether they're in elementary, post-secondary, senior high school, colleges. It's critical that we espouse an opportunity for them to create genius in this living museum.
So it would really, the fees that you're proposing will, that you will be proposing or implementing in the interim would be standard for everyone? So there isn't, I know you would have fees for students that would probably be lower, and hopefully that would be subsidized and one...
Eventually.
Yeah, eventually.
We would look for opportunities.
But there isn't, and even for our senior citizens, right? And so we have one fee for all, whether they're tourists or local. Is that what we're looking at?
We're looking at different fees for different participants.
Okay.
Different, very different.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and you're right. You did indicate that for residents, the manomko, veterans, students, and members of the military. And this is definitely far more expansive than some of the places that we actually go to where there's really no resident, you know, local resident fees. And so I'm happy to see that because, you know, we want our people... And so I'm happy to see that, because, you know, we want our people, who's going to be sustaining this, to also, to attend. Just for clarification, in terms of the collections of these, you know, monies for the events and admissions and membership fees, that they'll be deposited into?
Into the Guam Museum Revolving Fund, and that will turn around to pay the contractor on a task-driven order. So it's always sustaining. That way, we lower the impact of what the museum will request of the taxpayers.
Okay, thank you very much. Senator Torres, any questions or comments?
Mr. Cameron, do you feel that the sunset date is, are you content with that date, August 1st?
Very much so. Very much so. We're more than generous. Thank you.
More than generous? Okay.
But you want to be more generous?
No, I'm asking if that's, you know, if it's enough time, or if maybe you want a little bit of...
Well, half that conversation, then.
My colleague says if we could push it...
It's very short after, you're really up and running, I think, and I don't think it's enough time to really settle.
December? December?
Well, you have to make that recommendation here in the public hearing.
Yes, I would like to recommend the extension. Thank you, Senator Torres, for making that statement. I would like to then recommend, take up that offer to amend this bill to read December 31st.
Because then that will give you enough time to actually settle and get into an operational mode, to understand if your fees are in fact...
Yes. I think the reason why we proctored the 120, because there was no way that I wanted to give the impression to any lawmaker or policymaker that I was trying to bypass the AAA process. That was the main intent. But definitely, December 31st would be more than feasible. And like you said, Senator, it gives us a better ground as to how we're actually running the museum then.
Well, we've never done anything of this magnitude.
Not at all.
So I think that, you know, we really should err on the, not err, we should actually aspire to hit it, and give ourselves enough time to settle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
More time there. I just, follow-up on this question, Senator.
I, you know, I just needed to clarify, I know we're moving the date while we are still not sure about when the museum is actually going to be completed. So are we, would it be wise to set a specific date, or would it be expanding the number of days from the time that the museum...
Is fully operational.
Is fully operational, that you would have this window, like a number of days, right? You know where I'm going with this, Madam Speaker?
Yes, but so, looking at the bill, which says provided that the interim fee shall sunset, so it's sunset on August 1st, and now...
So what I, what I'm concerned about is that, because at this point, I didn't get a sense that we're clear about when the museum is going to open. I mean, barring any impediments and delays again. So rather than to, to set a specific date, how about if we, you propose the number of days from the time that the museum is actually operational? I'm just concerned that, you know, we've had a lot of false dates, or, you know, when we were supposed to open, so rather than, than to keep moving as, you know, you just, let us know the number of days that you would like to be able to, to use the interim fees from the time that the museum is fully operational.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Senator. I do like that concept very much. And I would like to report back to the committee, a proposal to that effect.
Okay. I think that would probably be safer.
Yes, I agree. Thank you.
Senator Morrison?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I really was jumping ahead, so, thank you.
That's okay. Transition into it.
Yes. Bill 42 calls for approval without compliance of the AAA process. However, you noted in your testimony that you're, as a speaker noted, that you will still be going through this process. But without compliance, given that you're still be in the process, what would be the process to notify our people of these interim fees?
We're looking at sitting down once the contract has been fully signed by all parties, and we're looking at, within the next month or so, on reaching out to the community additionally, and most especially, as the contractor has stated, if we're going to get the thousands of tourists in, we need to start negotiating with them, and seeing how that rate will evolve, and how that rate would be fair across the board, and that the museum becomes a place that the tourists do really want to come to. And so we need to have a sustainable amount of tourism, of course, that drives this economy, to be always engaged with the admissions to museums.
But there'll be some form of announcement about what these, you know...
Yes, we do.
The amounts.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Cameron.
Thank you.
Welcome, Senator. Adam, question or comments?
There's a question that I really want to make sure, too, because as you maybe would have a conversation with the contractor, is that we want to ensure that in this particular, you know, legislation, that there's going to be no conflict with the contract terms, you know, concerning the museum's operations, okay? So make sure you have that conversation, and let us know as well, because is it something that maybe we might need to do to amend this particular...
Yes, of course. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank you very much, again, for your testimony in Bill 242, and then anyone else who's interested in providing additional, you know, comments, you know, please submit it to my office. We're going to move on to Bill 245. And Bill 245 is relative to authorizing the Guam Public Library System to lease the portion of the building referred to as the Internet Cafe for the purpose of operating and managing a high-quality and reasonably-priced cafe. And so, one of the new features of the newly renovated library is to have, of course, an Internet Cafe. And given the current statute regarding a lease of a space for a food establishment, only the frontage property is authorized, so therefore, Bill 245 intends to allow for the opening of the Internet Cafe, which would be located inside the property. And so, you know, that's something, then, again, that we're hoping to have that conversation with you on this, because currently at least, it's outside, now we're looking at having it inside. Okay, so, Mr. Cameron?
Thank you again, Madam Speaker. My name is Joseph Arturo Cameron, and the Guam Public Library System falls under the administrative purview of the Department of Commerce. I am here to testify in favor of this bill. More importantly, I am reminded that the current legislation that was proctored by former Senator Sam Abini was to allow, at that one time, vendorizing on the grounds, and that was external. So when I was moving forward with the proposed RFP, and going through the process with the Guam Services Agency, to coin the phrase, GSA, their response was that, because the current law speaks specifically to vendorizing on the grounds versus actually leasing space, that, an amendment to that. So I'm proctoring the amendment that we repeal the old law, Madam Speaker, for outdoor vendorizing, because I wouldn't have space anyways, having taken up additional spaces on the property already, and I would not need to actually have vendorizing on top of that. I also would like to add that, in order to move forward with the lease, the whole process here that drives me is that there will be a very fair opportunity for the museum to have some additional income. When I say the word "fair," there's industry standards, as we know it today, that when the bidder comes in and talks about leasing the space, they also have to capture their expenditures. But anything after the expenditure, there's a capitation rate, and there's also an opportunity for profit margins. The industry rate is that anything about 5% of the profit margins is a standard rate for Guam rate, that would make its way to additional income for the library.
So, so first thing first, is to be allowed by law to be able then to operate then inside now the facility? And then, of course, after that, then, you would negotiate, I guess, or doing RFP to determine exactly then who will be? So, so the thing that, of course, that this does not do, that I think conversations need to also continue, because it does not limit, you know, what the cost will be to the library, because then, when you're inside the facility, there would be increase of, you know, of course, utilities, that would have to be, you know, borne by, you know, whomever it is that's above and beyond what the library is paying for. And then, of course, hoping that, aside from that, that in your RFP, the consideration for the terms, the amount of the profit, the use of space, liability, you know, all that, and ultimately, I hope, too, that then, and whether this should be part of, you know, amending, you know, the bill, and that's why we'd like to have you continue to work with the committee, would be even the fact that should it be subject to an audit?
Correct. And it will be, it shall be. That would be paramount. We also would like to include the fact that if you are an individual without the ability to access a computer, we have already stations being set up that's purchased by the Guam Public Library System, that will be there for the use of the general public as well. We'll also have Wi-Fi. So for those of you who aren't able to have your own computer, or you just didn't have the ability to go back and bring your laptop with you, there'll be stations set up in the CyberTech Cafe as well.
Thank you. Any questions, my colleagues? Senator Morrison?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Not too long ago, we worked closely to address a community Wi-Fi measure that works along with the, our mayors, to address free Wi-Fi or Internet access at the village communities, or whatever centers that the mayors may establish, working with our telecom providers. So I really appreciate what's going on here. However, it's very specific to the Hagatnia Library, and is there a situation that we can expand this? What is the status of the Agit Library? Is it still not in function right now, the Agit Library?
No, the Agit, you're talking about the Agit Library?
Yes.
That is functional.
Okay. Is it possible, I'm working with the author, maybe that this could expand into that area as well? I mean, I, because the goal here is, even, I know within the community Wi-Fi, our goal is, we know our youth are attracted to these types of access.
All the branches have Wi-Fi.
Okay.
And they've been donated, by the way, by a very fine company.
Okay, great.
And that continues.
Okay, so, now, is this possible, though, to, maybe work with the author, to, would you support expanding this type of measure to, you know, the option comes about, that we can also have an Internet Cafe in Agit?
Wow. Then definitely, I'll be going back to the interior office to make that request. Certainly, there are opportunities, but we need to start up with this one. And of course, our funder was already here, and very excited, to tell you the truth, because it's one of a kind, and it's creating a sense of place for parents, for adults with kids, nephews, nieces, you name it. And it allows for even parents who work in the Greater District of Hagatnia to have a place with their children while they're waiting for their spouse to get off, if they're working late. They have a place in the weekends. It's totally awesome. When you walk in on March 3rd, on the ribbon cutting, you will see that the existing library, not the new additions, is also renovated. And it's, we're creating additional community spaces in those areas. So we're very excited, because what used to be an open forum place is no longer. There are areas that are closed in, and actually, we won't have to do this anymore to children. Shhh. You can allow them to speak. You can allow them to interact. It's all about the immersion of learning, and the way kids want to learn today is, they got to have voice. So by segregating these sections, it allows for the other individuals who can't handle the noise to have that peace and quiet as well, on all three levels of the entire library.
Last question, Madam Speaker. Have you noticed, I know you have your team here, when you opened up the Wi-Fi access to our youth, did you notice any more traffic to the facility?
Oh, yes.
From our youth?
Yes. We actually have a running log of users for our computers on every library, and that goes without saying, that there is a group of individuals with or without computers who will access those opportunities as soon as they walk in.
Okay, thank you.
And there's, there's rules to live by that we have, so that not one person hogs up the whole day. But we do have some rules that are promulgated for that.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Senator, Adam? Question or comment?
You know, I was looking at your testimony here, and that the library will be providing the computers and free access, Wi-Fi access within the cafe. You didn't want to put that out on your RFP to lease out that Internet Cafe, where whoever leases it must provide the computers and the Wi-Fi for that?
It was part of our Department Interior grant, and that was the basis of our approval of an Internet Cafe, because they weren't sure at the time that that opportunity would arise, and that it would actually be crystallized. So it was the intent of the Interior money to allow that to happen as well. In the scope of services, of course, on the RFP, we would dictate the opportunity of how those equipment will be maintained by and the use of. And because what this does is, it allows for us to utilize the funds that we are currently having, actually, it's additional computers. We're not taking away from any of the other spaces that already have many computers. It's additional. But I do like your words, maybe what we could do is put into the scope of work, that although there are computers there now, but that the maintenance of the computers could be something we could consider, that the RFP would include as part of the scope of work, or the replacement?
Yeah, because what we don't want, what we don't want to happen is that you lease out the section of the Internet Cafe, and the patrons of the cafe might think that that's, you know, for the, for them, and not for the library use also. So we want to make sure we have that clear distinction, that the Internet and the computers that will be located in the cafe is also, it'd be publicly, for public use for all...
Oh, absolutely, and I agree with you. And thank you for making that comment, because definitely, the fact that it's in a government property, and that it is the library, the company is basically leasing the space to provide services of a cafe, but the other educational component that permeates throughout the entire facility has the same mode of operandi.
Yeah, because we don't want it to be where they're, you know, making additional revenue from the computers that are provided from the government.
Correct. We will visit that and be very cautious and proactive in that area. Thank you.
You're welcome. Senator, okay.
Sejuusmausi, Mr. Cameron, I was wondering, when I saw this bill, at first, I did a little bit of research into, into other public library systems in rural areas particularly, and whether the cafes have had a benefit to them, whether they're well-accepted or not. And the, the comments generally have been in favor of cafes and the library systems. But I was wondering, though, if in your planning processes, if you've actually done any feasibility studies to determine whether, whether, you know, it is a viable option, because you've got, you're dealing with a library system that has limited room, you're dealing with limited hours of operation for a cafe, so the sustainability of that operation is also, perhaps, assuming that it is intertwined with the library, and there isn't separate access, right, outside, then the third part... Then the third part is its proximity to other cafes in Hagatna. And I was just wondering if, if all those have been considered, because the last thing you want to do is provide for something that really is not viable in, in the market.
Correct. And we've spoken to our neighbors, most especially the Spear Court area, and they would love to see a cafe right next across the street, and I'm sure they'll populate it almost immediately. One of the things that is a great advantage to our layout, if I may put it that way, is that that cafe has a separate, we have an entrance to the children's library to the right, and another entrance to the cafe on a hallway. But the main library also still is closed. It's separate of the outside. So it allows for earlier morning openings, so that it doesn't have to be within the specific hours of operation. And we want to maximize that opportunity as much as possible, because cafes won't want to be limited as to what they could produce as far as, you know, for their capital gain. It's, it's very important that we take that into consideration, because we don't want to deter any potential opportunities that our, our community of businesses would like to participate in this particular bid.
Do you, do you believe that the traffic right now is enough to support it? I mean, assuming that the cafe will be a driver. But, but do you, is there, is there a base right now that, that would warrant making that kind of an investment?
I don't have a particular base, but the part that I do see is that there are so many numerous cafes within just Hagatna, and they're all packed. And they're all looking for something to go to as far as that opportunity of a cafe. And, and we spoke to a lot of the, I have, I've actually spoken to the owners of cafes in the Greater District of Hagatna. And quite honestly, they're, they're all interested in putting in for this bid as well. They've made that very clear to me, that they, they're bulging from the seams from where they're at. And that there appears to be a, how do I put it? A craze for cyber, for cafes, and that the business is there for it.
Thank you, Senators. Maybe just expand a little bit, Senator, it's a question, of course, in terms of, you know, the equipment that are there, that the company that's going to be there could be then responsible for the upkeep and maintenance of it, because that always means additional funds, of course, that the government would have to provide. And the government hasn't been, you know, that, of course, you know, generous, I suppose, because it just depends on, you know, the amounts of limited funding. That, you're right, you want this to be able to continue, because they're going to be benefiting from using what is already provided, rather than them providing. So I really hope you would consider that very seriously. Everything above and beyond what it would normally take in terms of their budget to operate the library, that then all those expenses would be then borne by whomever it is that's going to be running the cafe.
I would certainly visit that as part of my negotiation.
Thank you. So any other last comments on 245?
Yes. Only because the question will probably arise, Madam Speaker, and my dear Senators. The funds that will be collected for this particular venue, that fund needs to be able to return back to the library for purchasing of, not necessarily the maintenance, but for the needs of the library when it comes to additional programming monies, or materials, or supplies for, for books. It's really critical that we, we seriously consider that as a, I'm not trying to limit how we spend it, but clearly, it's for the programming and the needs of the, the library. Not so much the maintenance, but the program needs, whether it be in the form of books, or whether it be in the form of additional computers, or if it's in the form of marketing a specific children's program that we currently have that's regularly monthly, for those dwindling, dwindling amounts. And it's not just for the Hagatna Library. It's for the Guam Public Library System, because we have, we have Teadidu, we have Berigada, we have Hagatna, we have Agat.
And Malesso.
We have Malesso. So we don't want to, you know, cut myself off from not being able to put it through the needs of the Guam Public Library System. It's, it's all incorporated. Because what is made available here and the opportunities that would avail, and as far as resources, we need to be able to perpetuate that to our other family libraries in the community. I want that to be a very clear distinction, that I am very much in support, that it's, just because it was born in Hagatna doesn't stay in Hagatna. It is shared throughout the entire Guam Public Library School System and its needs.
Thank you. And we want to continue, of course, this dialogue, because there's been many suggestions provided by the members, that we want to be able then to incorporate in, in all the three bills that, you know, we've heard this morning.
Thank you.
So I want to thank everyone who's, you know, here in support and have provided testimony. And in addition, of course, is that anyone who would like to, and we still have an opportunity to submit testimonies, you can please address it to fbtorres@judiwanfat.com. You can fax it to 472-3589. You can also have it delivered here to 155 Hessler Place, Hagatna, Guam. Or you may personally walk it down to either my office in that corner, and the other end will be the reproduction room. So the two individuals who were, their nomination to serve at the Guam Community College Board of Trustees have been heard, and that's for Mr. Ariola and Ms. Gina Ramos. Also, Bill 2, now you have to get all the numbers, 235, 242, and 245 have all been heard, and it is now 11:43. And this, this public hearing then is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.